Fire investigations through the University of Arkansas Criminal Justice Institute. Uh, six members attended aerial apparatus operations with our mutual aid departments. As a reminder about our open house, that's this Saturday starting from ten to two if they come out. Reminder of a community CPR class, which will be the twenty-third, starting at six P M. That's it for fire departments on building permits. We finished August with twelve permits. We have nine new permits so far for September, giving us a total of one hundred and ten permits so far for the year.
At the open house, y'all are also doing asylum auction and.
There'll be asylum auction. All kinds of stuff. I guess I got my people donated a lot to it and so we'll recognize that after the conference, after everybody did that thing.
Various desserts?
All the other beer, things, booze.
Grispy but.
Desserts.
Italian cream cake?
I don't know about that. Put any requests ahead of it.
Are you making any dessert?
No, I'm not making any desserts.
Do you want to tell everybody what that money's going for? I know you've said it before, but.
We're looking to build a kids' firehouse, smokehouse, like a training facility for kids that we can focus on like the weeks of education when they come into the fire department. Then, you know, those types of things, so that kids can go through it and learn all the safety.
Similar to Arkansas Children's has had, if you've been to Arkansas Children's, and a lot of the hospitals have.
And most of the fire departments at like Conway Fire's got a nice one, like they're like they go around. Got some ideas from that. But we're gonna try to build, we were gonna do like a blow up one, like a they have a blow up type deal. But longevity of that is probably not the best decision on financial decision, you know, so we're looking, it's gonna cost a little bit more to build a trailer. But the longevity of that'll be way better, lasts us a lot longer.
And there is a gentleman going around selling the photos also.
Yes, that's right. I should have had you make up my list.
Just trying to help you. I know you'll remember it later.
Right, yeah, the uh, the picture guy's going around, all that's getting donated for the same project to get the kids' fire, firehouse training facility type thing. I don't know what you wanna call it like that. We call it a smokehouse for kids, but there's one more to it than just that. Anything else I forgot to call? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, planning commission, uh, I don't know if the scheduled meeting ran now. Um, they've had, they've had some active meetings the past few months. Uh, Jimmy and I have a lot of work ahead of us as far as some different plan reviews. Trey will be helping us as well on that. Uh, but uh, really can't think of a whole lot right now. They did approve some law splits and things, but uh, I want to thank Trey for his help as usual. Um, been pretty busy. Public Department?
Don't have a whole lot to report, but we got everybody out on their own, which is the first time since, I don't know, a couple of years now that we've got everybody on their own. Don't expect to see very many because we're doing a lot of training. I've got two in training this week. Well, one day I've got three in train next week. We got trained here at the P D that will have, we'll probably have forty different comps from all over the place here. Gonna train next week and then, uh, I'll be going to the shoes conference and so you're not gonna see any extra people. So, don't think that it's discussed or sports staff, too much extra people. Uh, besides that, everything's going fine. Uh, do have, our server is outdated. It was purchased, I guess, back in two thousand twelve. Microsoft is not supporting it at all anymore. So we got quote and the city's portion that we're gonna need to get out of general fund is eight thousand, six hundred, twenty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. For the city's portion of the server.
Thought we updated all that last year, or was that?
That was not the server. We updated our email.
Yeah, the Microsoft.
Microsoft email, but so like, my data from our reporting software's on the server. Kelly's is on there, sure apartment is all on there and so all the departments are gonna pay, pay their share. Uh, the city's share, which is also my share, is at eight thousand dollars.
Can you tell us what the total cost is?
Yeah. The total cost of is seventeen thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-five cents.
Okay, I would imagine that we have heard the eight thousand, six hundred, twenty-two dollars and thirty-five cents for the city's portion for the sub day.
Second.
Um, all right, I have a motion and a second to approve, uh, said amount.
How long is that gonna be good for, you think? Like this next time we'll have to play a server, how long is this one being?
Two thousand twelve.
Twelve, Louis said, okay. I guess that.
All right, all of you favoring the said motion, taking the vote, saying aye?
Aye.
Any votes, right? Is that approved?
That's all I have, majority vote from me.
Could I ask you, how many officers do we have employed right now?
Ten.
Ten, and that is full staff?
Full staff. Hold your breath.
Be nice to him, Jimmy.
Be nice to him, yeah.
We'll see if I can get on two meetings and say that.
Uh, served department, I guess.
Uh, nothing much going on. We've got an ordinance we're gonna look at tonight. Uh, the crew themselves are just finishing up the uh, lift stations and also the headworks, that's a step complex.
I will say, I've uh, been sniffing a little bit and I do have, they did have things running very well. Took them a long time to vary names especially, but parts are getting worse again. Went through COVID, now we're going through terrorists, but uh, uh, they've done a good job.
Good group of people.
Yeah, they are.
I know that for a while we had some lift stations that were not working and some problems. Is everything working now? Perfect, thank you.
Uh, straight department, uh, not much to report there. Um, they're been trying to finish up on some uh, pipes. Uh, different crossings, uh, while the weather was dry and uh, basically just general maintenance. Uh, parks and rec, um, not just a ton going on there. Mister Terry Shannon did notify me, his last day will be October second. All right, uh, public comment? All right, uh, announcements, um. The big one here is the two thousand twenty-five countywide cleanup. Um, let me get this right, October seventeenth and eighteenth. On October seventeenth, it will be from eight to three and on October eighteenth, it will be from eight to twelve. Uh, locations across the county, the Faulkner County Road Department, uh, the Guy City Hall, the Booster Fire Department, the Holland City Hall. Uh, our location is the Bologna Street Department at forty-seven North Mount Olive Street. Uh, the apartment sanitation in Conway, sixty-four, will be open, as well as the Conway Expo Center and Fairgrounds. Um, due to state regulations, uh, they cannot accept the following: tires, paint, liquids, motor oil, antifreeze, car batteries. Household hazardous waste, herbicides, pesticides, electronic equipment, construction debris, fluorescent bulb or yard waste. However, tire disposal will be available at the Faulkner County Road Department, the Bologna Street Department, the Conway Expo Center and the Conway, City of Conway Sanitation Department. And if I remember right, Jimmy has limited to four tires per individual, correct?
Yeah, and once they're trying to build up, that's it.
That's it, so.
Also, I was out there talking with Matt and he asked us to, asked him to separate the rim from the tires if they can, take it by Keith's or somebody to get them to separate them. He said that they won't take them if the rim is still connected.
So Jimmy's gonna kinda head that up for us at the city, um, as well as Matt and the straight department. Um, that's, that's quite a, uh, that's quite an undertaking. Uh, they, they work hard. Uh, but uh, that is a service that's off, that's uh, sponsored by the Faulkner County Solid Waste Management District. And if you need more info, their office number is five zero one, three three six, oh seven five eight. Um. Park recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've talked about our P W program before and we've talked about the coaches that, uh, the volunteer coaches, but we also need to recognize the background people. I know several people worked very hard getting parade floats together and those aren't coaches that receive recognition. We've got the ones that were at the concession stand and, you know, just different things that they're not recognized for. So when you see those parents that are volunteering their time, be certain to thank you and we appreciate them, even though if they're not a part of the city department, they're still a huge part of the city.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna backtrack a little bit. I'm always shoving papers and I still forget things. Um, balances as of September sixteenth, uh, the general fund, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, ninety-three dollars and sixty-three cents. Straight fund, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, nine seventy-seven, sixty-one. Fire department, forty-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. The Act eight thirty-three fund for the fire department, five thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-six cents. Parking rec, general fund, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. All right, uh, D C D C does not have anything tonight at Chamber of Commerce?
Our monthly luncheon will be this Thursday, September the nineteenth, at eleven thirty at Central Silence. Keith Almond with Skyward Roofing will be our speaker. I think he's got some new, new things that, um, he will be presenting, that they will be doing. Uh, our fall, we're gonna participate in the city's fall festival. I think that's October thirtieth. The chamber will be giving away a few golden tickets for a chocolate eating contest. So, along with the candy and all, we'll be giving away a limited number of golden tickets for people to participate in a chocolate eating contest that will be held at a later date. And our banquet, once again, is to remind everybody, will be February twenty-first at Eagles Look, where it's the same place it was last year.
Do you have any question? Sorry about the fall fest. Is that the hardest fest that Miss Lit is doing at the Better's Museum?
No, it's, um, the city is, doesn't have.
Trunk or tree.
Truck or tree.
Truck or tree.
Yes.
All right, um, old business, uh, we titled it, have discussion on the twenty twenty-five P D O one building materials. I know y'all had some questions about that last time. Um, Mister Foster is here with our, with our city engineer. I did reach out to, uh, Trey, you can jump in anytime. This was, several of the mayors across the county, apparently we're one of the only cities that's not looked at this. Uh, Mayor Mayflower, I visited with him today for about an hour and they passed one similar to this last year. And, um, like I said, I didn't really have an opinion on it, but I've done a lot of research. I don't have a vote unless y'all get tied up, but it, I think it has merit and, uh, he was very, uh, uh, upbeat about what it's been able to do. He said it's, you know, strengthened the codes, uh, they based it a lot on the, on the fire protection code. Uh, but, uh, I think it's got merit. Like I said, uh, just y'all wanna let Trey, ask Trey or discuss it, however y'all wanna get started on it? You want a brief explanation from Trey?
Uh, so the, the purpose of the ordinance is to upgrade, uh, the building codes and other codes that we follow. The City International Building Code for, uh, structural buildings, uh, the National Electric Code and the mechanical code. That's all, uh, part of the city's, uh, codified code, codes ordinances, if you will. Um, all of the codes that are referenced in our, in our documents are fine. Uh, there's, there's nothing wrong with those. I feel like this ordinance provides a little bit more, uh, stick to developers and, and people that may be coming in. Uh, that wanna try to, to build something that's technically meets the codes, uh, but it's about the cheapest way you can do it. Uh, so I felt like, uh, changing the, the spacing on studs, uh, and wrappers on, on roofs was a positive call. Uh, the, uh, the H B A C upgrades, uh, that is something that's kind of being looked at across this turn. Instead of using flexible ductwork in roofs, uh, we're hard piping things now. Uh, it is more energy efficient. Uh, this does allow for the flexible dump work, uh, to still come off and, and go to each individual minutes with the main trunk lines, uh, through the, the attic space with the, uh, hard pipe. Uh, the, uh, the electrical conduits, uh, that's a pretty standard, uh, requirement now in commercial construction. Is that, uh, Rolex or plastic coated, uh, cable is, is not used anymore. That's kind of a, a fire protection bill, uh, where, you know, the Rolex can be pulled through the, the steel stuffwork or the framing of the steel building. Uh, it has a tendency to tear it, potentially create a short circuit there. Uh, the M C cable is just a little bit, uh, stronger material. It's the same wiring on the inside, it's just the exterior sheet that's around that. So, I felt like those were some things that, uh, as Mayor mentioned, uh, a lot of other, uh, communities within the county, across the state. Are adopting, uh, ordinances of, of this nature. Uh, some go a little further, some, some go a little less, but I felt this, like this was a good happy medium. Uh, and, uh, we can continue to look at the codes, uh, that we abide by, uh, here and upgrade as necessary, but I thought this was a good first step.
All right, question for Mr. Foster? Like I said, I did reach out, Mayor Esther Mayflower, I did not realize he was, is in depth on building, was a builder. And, uh, he brought up a lot of good points. Like I said, this is basically same thing that they've done, same thing that's been done in Greenbrier. And I, I know we, Conway is probably quite as stringent, correct, Stephen?
Oh, yes.
So, yeah, so, but anyway, that's, uh, per an explanation. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I got a comment based on what the mayor just said. I, I did speak to a few other folks. I was real interested to see if Joe or, um, or, uh, James had any rebuttals since they've worked closely in this field. If they don't really have much to say, I don't, I think it would benefit to ensure that we're not, you know, just throwing up something here.
I agree with you, Mike.
Yeah, we agree, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I agree with you. After reading, like I said, I, I, after my research, I'm visiting with other mayors and people across the county and state. I, I think this is a good set of Joe, I think.
The only question I ever had was the spacing on the, uh, trusses. Put, go on, instead of two, two foot, which what Foster always does, going down to sixteen inches, we'll see a big deal in that. But also, um, I hadn't built a house in years, okay? But if you, if you put trusses on two foot centers, then you use five eighths plywood up there instead of seven sixteenths, because it'll, it'll vent you to death. So, so this is really not that big a deal to have true. Adds what, three hundred dollars to a house maybe?
Yeah. Take the roof from digging.
Yeah, yeah.
I was saying that.
So I, that was, the, the slow, the closer spacing, uh, does allow for, uh, maybe a little bit thinner plywood. Uh, but if they use that thinner plywood on, on deeper spacing, I felt like you can kind of get that, that weighty, weighty effect on, on the roof. So, uh, it, it also lines up on top of the studs, so there's a little bit of added, you know, if you double plate, uh, your, your top wall and set that on there. Yeah, you could probably get away with, with twenty-four inch mine. Uh, the main objective was the sixteen inch centers on the stud walls. Uh, but just took it, took it a little step further with, with spacing on the trusses as well.
All right, what's.
Was it your intent, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Was it your intention to add an emergency clause to this? I know it states in the whereas there was an emergency.
I, that would be it to y'all with the body.
We would just have to rewrite it.
I think, uh, I think the, yes, there was the intention to have an emergency clause.
Okay.
Uh, I felt like this was something that was important enough to, to go ahead and enact and make it, uh, uh, or codified, uh, immediately rather than waiting. Uh, was it ninety days?
Well, it would be happy to be read three times unless we wait me for then ninety days, so it could be, could be six months.
Yeah, so. Yeah, never mind, six months, so a lot could happen in six months, so I, I felt like the emergency clause was, was justified in this case.
Want the will of body?
Well, I'll make a motion to.
Mister Brady, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I don't have a question. It's more, um, administrative, so it's referencing Title eleven building codes, construction section eleven point four point one. So that's actually, um, building permits?
That's, so that's been updated. Uh, you, you may not have the, the latest copy.
Okay.
Uh, so what I did was I, I updated, so eleven point.
Eleven point zero eight is building code. Okay.
Building codes and, and in that section, it references all the codes. So I just made a subset of those codes, we're modifying this specific code, this specific code, this specific code, uh, and included that in that, that top of the added section to, to.
That's pretty much what I did right here, sorry.
All right, I hope you will the body. Do you have any more discussions or questions?
I'll say, I'll make a motion to waive the second, third reading and read about Title only.
So, well, I was going to suggest, if it's the will of, uh, if it's will of Mister Foster, if it was his intention to add an emergency clause. That we send this, because we can't pass legally, I don't think we can pass an ordinance or an emergency clause that's not in writing. I think it's gotta be in writing. We can waive the second, third reading. I think there's not an emergency clause attached to language, I don't believe. It states in the whereas an emergency exists, I think it was the intention, that's why I asked that question, if it was the intention for an emergency clause to be attached. So my, what my suggestion would be that we tabled this for another month and bring it back next month with an, with an emergency clause attached.
So, y'all wanna bring it back next month with an emergency clause on it?
Yeah, I don't know the rule on that, as far as if it has to be written into the ordinance or if we can just pass it, to be honest, I, I've never come across that.
I could be, I could be wrong on that, but I think I've read somewhere from municipal league that anything like that has to be in writing.
Oh, just.
But I may be wrong, I'm not a lawyer.
If, if I can throw out my, uh, experience with this, uh, other ordinances that, that I've been involved with and other municipalities that had a, uh, emergency clause. Uh, they put the, the emergency speculation in the, in the title and then somewhere in the document, uh, and it, it's moved from place to place depending on what city you go to. Uh, as long as that, that verbiage for, uh, in, in particular with this one for section four, the emergency clause added to that.
So it does say that the, beginning to declare an emergency, which is correct.
Yeah.
And then version, there was an updated version of this that had a, included that section four. Uh, so section one was the amendments to the building codes and section two was, uh, the hosting requirements. Section three was, uh, you know, the statement of, if a section or phrase is found to be, uh, invalid, acceptable. And then section four was the emergency clause that reads, it has been determined that this ordinance is necessary and is vital to the health, welfare and safety of the public. Therefore, an emergency is hereby declared to exist and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, uh, from and after its passage approval and publication.
But we don't, I don't have that copy.
You don't have that document?
The copies I have is whereas an emergency is declared to exist and assesses heading the name.
That's.
Yeah, that does take that far.
Oh, uh.
About the will of body.
Maybe there was a.
Cindy has the most recent copy we have.
Could he print those, could we print those off?
This one? Yes.
I would say, we could just.
I don't know how that happened, but.
Is that the one that he's talking about that has the emergency clause in it?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
He has the emergency clause.
Okay.
Just on the back page.
Can we get a copy for all of us and we can?
If we could do that, because it looks like it's just re, re.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Jimmy, can you go make copies?
Brad wants to, uh, tell you to see them.
Brad, can you go?
Just the back page. They read it all.
All this.
It's two pages. Let's take a post.
How many copies do we need?
Uh, six, seven, I don't know. Look at Cindy has that.
Okay, I was just gonna print them.
We're hoping to progress.
Mister Mayor, can we push that to the end and while he gets the copies and go ahead and proceed and then come back to that at the end?
That way we can.
Okay, we can move forward, uh.
Table's up, my apologies for the meeting.
Jimmy and, uh, Brad have wanted copies for you, so we will.
So. I wanna take back my motion then for now and I was just gonna say that we should motion to move to the end of the meeting.
Uh, or y'all just want to move till we know they return? The next thing on the agenda is a proclamation for the go pink?
I know he's got the sewer one, he's gonna take a minute, I know.
Okay, we'll push it to the end then.
I want through this, so we can push the move.
All right, we will push that on the agenda to the end. All right, new business proclamation for go pink for the cure day.
Proclamation, whereas the pink ribbon reminds us that breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer in women and the second most common cause of cancer deaths in women in the United States. When breast cancer is detected in the O V age, there is ninety-nine percent and, is a ninety-nine percent and an eighty-seven percent five-year survival rate for localized and regional female breast cancer respectively. However, when breast cancer is detected, when it is already spread to distant parts of the body, the five-year survival is thirty-two percent. And whereas many counties in Arkansas do not have fixed mammography facilities and this creates a barrier for many women to easy, easily access mammography there. By possibly increasing their mortality rate. And whereas breast cancer knows no boundaries, be it in age, gender, socioeconomic status or geographical location. Despite tremendous progress by research breakthroughs for breast cancer, more than forty-two thousand people still die of breast cancer every year in the United States. And whereas it is estimated that in the United States, three hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty women and two thousand eight hundred men will be diagnosed with invasive breast, breast cancer during twenty twenty-five. And approximately forty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy women and five hundred and ten men will die of the disease. In Arkansas this year, an estimated two thousand, six hundred and ninety new cases will be detected and four hundred breast cancer deaths will occur. And whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month and the first Friday of October is designated as go pink for the cure day. To bring awareness of the importance of mammography and to renew its commitment to remove obstacles that prevent women from seeking mammograms. Now therefore, I Preston Scruggan, Mayor of the City of Bologna, Arkansas, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Arkansas, do hereby proclaim. October third, twenty twenty-five is go pink for the cure day. Across the city and I urge all of my fellow citizens to join me in helping to promote efforts for prevent, prevention and treatment of this deadly disease. In my testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the City of Bologna, Arkansas to be affixed this nineteenth day of September in the year of our Lord, twenty twenty-five.
All right, thank you, Cindy. Nothing, we'll make sure that gets took care of and everybody, uh, going to, to go pink is, is a big day. I think even, uh, Stephen will be thinking.
You know, I would encourage all the businesses, um, to participate in that. We have some people in our community that are, that are struggling with that now. And we should be there for them as well as all the other women in Arkansas, so I would encourage all the people and the businesses to participate in that day.
All right. All right, we're, uh, continuing to move on, on to the next agenda, Adam, twenty twenty-five P D O dash zero three, uh, sewer department, uh, raid ordinance. Mister Foster, same to be here tonight?
Of course. I'm here tonight to present the twenty twenty-five sewer raid study. Uh, I think everybody had a copy of that in the packet, but I provided everybody with a, a copy of it, of that as well. Uh, so everybody up here is probably heard of or familiar with Act six oh five. Uh, so everybody up here is probably heard of or familiar with Act six oh five, uh, that was passed in twenty twenty-one. Uh, that is, uh, the state, uh, elected to implement a, uh, water provider oversight, uh, law. That law requires that all water providers, and if you were a sewer provider as well, uh, you had to go through a rate analysis and, uh, determine if your rates were meeting the requirements of the law. So, uh, the last couple of years, I've done twenty or thirty of these for different municipalities across the state. Um, and in that, uh, you know, we've learned a few things, uh, but sewer department asked me to look into their rates and kind of evaluate it from the same standard uh, that Act six oh five, uh, and then, uh, and then this passed, uh, August, I think it's August, uh, when the legislature adjourned, they passed a a law entitled Act nine forty-five, that is essentially the same thing as Act six oh five, uh, but it, uh, specifically puts this burden of forming rate studies on a five-year rotating basis, uh, for, uh, en- entities that supply sewer, uh, for the public use. So, uh, it's not, the law is act is active, it is in place, um, it has gone through all of its legislative, legislative processes. Uh, the only thing that has not been fully, uh, outlined is the rules, uh, that will implement the law. Uh, so in Act six oh five, uh, they tasked Arkansas Natural Resource, Arkansas Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Division, and and coming up with the rules that they would use to implement, uh, this this new law. Uh, I have talked to that agency, and they have expressed to me that, yes, it's in process, uh, and it's expected to mirror, uh, the rules implementing Act six oh five, uh, almost in its entirety, so in this packet, I've included the language for implementation of the rules, and I've followed those guidelines, uh, in in my efforts to, um, evaluate the sewer system. So, um, I'll just, I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible, there's a lot here, but I'm gonna get to the bulk of my time in the appendix. Uh, so Act nine forty-five, uh, when I go to General Assembly of Regular Session, uh, Arkansas law, uh, co- code Title fourteen, chapter two thirty-nine, that has subchapter one, Oversight of Sewer, Sewer Retail Provider. Um, I've included the full text of that law in appendix A. In this, in this analysis, we are, uh, doing a financial sustainability of the system. We are doing a comprehensive, uh, analysis of the system, we are looking at, uh, any upgrades, capital improvements that are planned over the next five-year period, um, and we are making sure that service requirements are met. Uh, we're looking at revenues and expenses, and, uh, then we also look at meeting affordability. So, uh, I wanna flip over to appendix A, uh, this is the full, uh, full Act nine forty-five, you can read that if you so choose, uh, but it implements this law, uh, tells us what we gotta do. Um, the systems were found in fiscal distress, uh, they can be found in fiscal distress by not being able to, their territory shields, uh, they can be in fiscal distress by not, uh, providing or not submitting a rate study to, uh, Natural Resources Division. Uh, these also have to go to legislative audit, so when, uh, you know, your yearly audits come up with the sewer system, uh, they're gonna be looking at this to make sure that you're following what was in the recommended ratios. So, uh, now they have also provided for a, just like they did for Act six oh five, this implements in places. So, um, I wanna bring that to your attention, because, uh, I I do think we're being very proactive in presenting this early. Uh, the systems that serve, uh, five hundred or fewer customers, they are due to be required by July one of twenty-eight. Uh, five hundred and one to a thousand customers, July one of twenty-nine, and then over a thousand customers, July one of twenty-third. So, uh, Bologna has over a thousand customers, uh, and so in in my presentation of this to the sewer committee, I felt like it was good to be proactive, uh, so that we, the recommended rate changes can be implemented a little slower, uh, rather than getting to twenty thirty and having to do a really big job, uh, not to mention, uh, some capital improvement projects that the sewer department uh, has on its mind to start implementing over the next few years. So, um, appendix B are the rules that were implemented for Act six oh five, like I said, uh, talking with Natural Resources Division, uh, they are anticipating that these rules, uh, implemented in Act six oh five will be mirrored, uh, to implement Act nine forty-five. Um, flipping over to appendix, uh, C. This is the start of our financial analysis, so, uh, the method in which I have, uh, come up with to 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 do this is I take, uh, a full twelve months, if I can get a, uh, financial data, uh, that's all the revenues, all the expenses, so, uh, sewer department provided me with their, uh, year-end totals, uh, broken down by category, uh, for the revenues and expenses. Uh, so that is strictly off of their, their financial documents pages one, two, and three. So, based on the current rate structure and going forward, uh, you can see that that the sewer department had a, you know, a net loss of about twenty, close to twenty-eight thousand dollars. Um, that factors in depreciation, and, uh, that is kind of a, it's money, but it's not really money, uh, so you take depreciates now that it, uh, they show it operating in the black, which is good. Uh, page four of that is just a simple accounting of the different accounts that the sewer department has, whether they're restricted or non-restricted, and then the long-term liabilities that are attached to the sewer program. So, um, in this, the assets that I'm showing here, um, that's money in the bank. So, from a conservative standpoint, uh, I ignore that money, uh, so that, and I wanna know what it takes to operate and maintain the system. We have to start fresh from today, uh, going forward. Uh, I feel like that's a conservative approach, uh, and that also leaves money in the bank that can be utilized for emergencies should it come up. You know, if a pump goes down, it's gotta be replaced, there's monies already, uh, sitting there, uh, before this rate structure, uh, take, more or less, either takes effect or starts to accumulate, uh, dollars. So, uh, page five, uh, U A L R, uh, they stand for Economics and Development, uh, they're the agency that stands with keeping track of census data. Uh, so, uh, this population data, uh, on sheet five, uh, I go back to two thousand. We can see, uh, with the chart there that we, we're on a pretty steady increase, uh, in population, uh, for, um, uh, you know, getting, starting in twenty-four through thirty-one, on average, you're looking at about a hundred new people in town every year. Uh, so what I've done is I took the two thousand to twenty-three data that's available, and extracted away of that and signed basically a percentage of growth or or decline in population. Um, it's not perfect, uh, but it gives me some idea of what the population trend's gonna be, so if your population's going down or up, uh, your customers that you're serving with those facilities are following the same trends. Uh, so I use that to develop a a trend line, and then I attach that to the customer base that we have, uh, currently, and then either add or subtract to that customer base based on that, uh, percentage of growth or decline. So, um, sheet six, uh, this is a, uh, condensation of everything that is was shown on the first pages with the revenues and expenses. So this has got your yearly maintenance, uh, uh, for your, uh, treatment plant, yearly maintenance for the collection system, your vehicle maintenance and replacement, heavy equipment for ma- maintenance and replacement. Um, it's got, uh, your self-funded capital improvements, uh, some of these have, I think, the replacement of the one oh seven submersible pumps that already been done, uh, that's been taken care of, and then, uh, one of the things on the capital improvement program is to continue doing, if you guys remember back a few years ago when we did the expansion of the sewer system. The first phase of that was we went and cleaned and televised a lot of lines, and we were able to fix those things, and we would reduce the high-high going to the treatment plant. Pretty drastic, uh, but we didn't do the entire system, uh, so, you know, Brandon's come up with an idea that, you know, let's do a little bit at a time, year to year, and fix a little bit at a time, and, you know, over the next few years, we'll eventually get it all, kinda take care of it and get everything tight. So that's on there, and then, uh, potential with continued growth that we're seeing, uh, you know, we may have to, uh, increase the capacity of the sewer plant at some point. Uh, so I put a lot of that in there that would account for, if we have to do that, and have to issue another bond for that, then we're we're already accounting for the payment that would be associated with it, so that we don't have to adjust rates in the future. Uh, through this study period, uh, to to be able to do those capital improvements should they be, uh, approved and or needed. Uh, so sheet seven, uh, this is your current rate structure, uh, everybody's, well, your residential, your commercial, and your school are all on the same rate, and then there's a few customers that they were classified as well one and well two, uh, but basically everybody in town is on residential or commercial or the school. And that's sixteen dollars for the base rate, it's first thousand gallons of wastewater based on your water usage, and then six dollars per thousand gallons after that. Uh, so then here's where I'm using that that trend line on the population, and you can see we're picking up a few customers, uh, on a yearly basis. So, kinda follow that through to page nine, that takes you through the end of the study period, which is in twenty thirty-one. And then, uh, sheet ten is our debt service coverage ratio. Uh, the state, uh, requires that you have a minimum debt service coverage ratio of five percent. Uh, that is all your revenues, less your expenses, without taking into account your your debt payments, and then you divide that total or that, you divide your revenues less expenses by your debt total, by your your total debt payments, to give you that percentage of debt service coverage ratio. So, state requires a minimum of five percent, they recommend, uh, from ten to twenty-five percent debt service coverage ratio. Uh, the outstanding bonds that the sewer department has now require is a ten percent debt service coverage ratio, so ten percent is gonna be the minimum, uh, that we could do for Bologna. As you can see in twenty-four, uh, we were good, we were at one point five. Twenty-five, we're still, uh, expected to do good at twenty-four percent. So, and then in twenty-six, as we start implementing some of this, these self-funded things, and we start thinking about capital improvements, expansions of of other facilities, and and start taking all that into account, we start dropping that down below, uh, one. And you can see above that, if the revenue expense ratio, uh, anything less than one is basically you're operating in the red. So we would be, in my opinion, operating in the red, uh, if we're not being proactive in trying to do these things, uh, to keep the system, uh, sustainable. So, uh, sheet eleven is just a continuation, I'm sorry, sheet, uh, that's debt service coverage ratio based on the current rates. Sheet eleven is the, uh, estimated revenues for a proposed rate structure. Twenty-four, you can see no change, twenty-five, you can see no change, and then twenty-six, uh, which is at the end of this proposing to implement the new rate structure beginning in January of twenty-six. So, I'm calling for an increase on the base rate from, uh, sixteen dollars to eighteen dollars and forty cents, and the uniform rate from six dollars to six dollars and ninety cents. Uh, on average, uh, your sewer customers are, based on their water bill, they're using, the residential customers are using about forty-two hundred gallons a month. So, on average, that represents just shy of a five-dollar increase on, uh, on sewer, uh, for twenty-six, and that equates to a fifteen percent increase. Uh, sheet twelve is going forward, uh, what I've found in in doing these rate studies is most places don't keep up with their rates. Water companies are notorious for it, sewer departments are notorious for it, uh, small towns in very rural Arkansas are very notorious for not ever changing their rates. Well, your cost of operating a a water or sewer system is continuously going up, with the cost of materials, uh, the cost of of chemicals, all of those things are continually going up. So with this act, uh, it seems reasonable that if we're gonna do this on a five-year basis, let's set rates that incrementally go up each year so we can keep up with inflation, we can keep up with, you know, providing cola adjustments for the employees, uh, the cost of materials, all those things. Uh, so I am recommending a five percent yearly increase, uh, twenty-seven through thirty-one, uh, each year. Uh, and you can see that, uh, if you flip over to sheet fourteen, our debt service coverage ratio, including all those things that are in the works, uh, are one point one three in twenty-six, it gets up to one point two five in twenty-seven, and starts kinda trending down a little bit. Uh, but you're still meeting that requirement of one point one, uh, as our minimum debt service coverage ratio. So, uh, that's, that is the recommendation. Appendix D is your asset management plan, that is something else that the state requires, uh, is that we are tracking, uh, parts of that infrastructure that may or may not need to be replaced, and annual maintenance costs. So, uh, sheet one through five, all these tables are basically the same, the first one is is due, is, uh, specific to, uh, treatment plant. You see an annual maintenance cost there of about thirty thousand dollars. Uh, that's about right, uh, the estimated replacement cost. I put a ten million dollar price tag on that, it doesn't calculate into anything, uh, but cut, that's a, that's an educated guess that to replace that facility would be around ten million dollars. Uh, if it was down below in the five-year capital improvement need, then I would get a little closer with that with that number as far as what the actual cost is for replacement. But the state requires that we provide the investment replacement cost, so that's, that's what that is. Uh, so the five-year capital improvement needs at, uh, the plant, uh, treatment expansion, uh, you know, if we have to do a new E Q basin or add another, uh, plant to that facility, we're looking at around three million dollars, and that would be proposed, uh, as a re-finance of the existing cells and used tanks. Uh, twenty-eight, uh, that is the, uh, E Q basin expansion, that's estimated at a million dollars, and that may be funded by a bond issue. Uh, there again, I've already incorporated, if if that project is done, the payment associated with that bond issue has already been incorporated to the rates. So even if it gets pushed back a year or two, that money's still there, that we can utilize that to either pay it off early or, uh, we we built up a little reserve that we can maintain that payment over the course of a twenty-year payout. So, uh, sheet two is your collection system, uh, there again, same thing, uh, you got your pump stations, uh, the, uh, annual maintenance cost, the estimated replacement cost, um, I see a typo when you estimate a replacement cost, it it doesn't factor into anything, but I do, I'm sorry. Well, that might mean that it, that's the collection system as a whole, um, so that that number is relatively. Um, that's sheets two and three, uh, when you get over to sheet four, uh, I've got the replacement of the one oh seven, uh, pumps, that's already been done, and then collection sys- system maintenance, so what what's being proposed is starting at about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, creeping up a little bit over time, uh, to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, basically one point four million in, from between twenty-six and thirty-one, of additional cleaning and televising repair of the existing collection system, uh, similar to what we did back in twenty nineteen and twenty. Uh, but based on rates and going out and getting a loan for that, uh, just do it a little bit at a time to pay for it out of out of the revenues. Uh, uh, this is the, uh, the, uh, heavy equipment, this is your vehicles, generators, tractors, your back trailers, jet machines, all of those things. Um, it appears based on the, uh, status of of the equipment we have now, uh, we may need to look at replacing a pickup in twenty thirty-one, and may need to re- uh, replace a mower in twenty thirty-one. Uh, I think it's good practice if, rather than going out, taking out a loan for a new vehicle or a mower, uh, if we can just pay. I think it's good practice if, rather than going out, taking out a loan for a new vehicle or a mower, uh, if we can just pay for it. So, outright, just go ahead and give it, and write a check for wherever, wherever you go by it from, whether it's on, uh, state, uh, state bill or whatever. But, um, anyway, that's, that's what's shown there. Does it have to be replaced? No, if it's starting to get to the point where it's costing you more than the habit, then it is, just go ahead and replace it. The money would be there to just go write a check for a new vehicle, should it be. That's it. I know I went through that fast, I know you guys probably read over that packet. Uh, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Just to clarify, a question. So, on the asset management plan, this is your, um, these are your sub recommendations as to when this, when this equipment's going to have to be replaced?
Yes, so every, every piece of equipment they have has a useful life. Uh, so, some of the things are getting closer to the end of the useful life, they might still be perfect for fun. Uh, but from this report's standpoint, uh, I wanted to make sure that we got sufficient revenues that if it needs to be replaced, we've got it there replaced.
And we need to have a plan, you know, that's good.
So, with the amount collected over the next ten years on this rate, if we do the way this is, it should be enough. My understanding is to where we, you know, cover any maintenance costs for the system for the next ten years or any kind of major stuff, warrant on, have it pass a tax for a bond again, correct?
That's the plan, yes.
Is the plan, unless we have, probably have massive growth, that we have to add something.
The, the biggest thing now that, that could happen over the next five or six years is if we continue this growth, that plant is going to reach its maximum capacity. Uh, so, if we've got to expand that plant, then, uh, built in where these rates would cover a loan attached or bond issue attached to that. So, I guess we would have to go through the process of issuing a bond and all that stuff. But, the rates associated with, to pay that off would not have to be increased any further, just maintain what we're doing right now.
Yeah, we, we would have to pass an additional sales tax as well to pay for it, would be the idea of.
Yeah, that, that's.
We're banking money up for that cost in the future.
Yes, yes, that's, that's the point.
What if we have a massive growth at one time? I mean, I know we've talked about neighborhoods coming in, I mean, if we have five or six hundred homes in the next two years we build, are we sustainable, you think, right now?
The first thing that, uh, so, in twenty-eight, uh, I'm showing that we potentially doing a new EQ basin. Uh, that would sustain that, uh, because that's going to give us the ability to hold that incoming wastewater and then push the, put the plant within the existing capacity of that plant. So, uh, yeah, so it's kind of a two-phase approach there, we get a big influx, yes, and then if we continue to get more influx of population, then, you know, looking at the potential of expanding the, the capacity of the plant as well.
Other question?
Basically, if we don't pass this, then we're, you know, as we move forward with our projection, projected growth, we're going to be operating in the red.
If we move forward with the status quo and just do exactly what we're doing right now, not being progressive and, and planning for the future, then we would be fine. But in order to be progressive and plan for the future, this incremental rate increase would be needed, uh, rather than waiting till twenty thirty and then hitting everybody with a fifty or sixty percent increase all at one time.
Mr. Mayor, you may know this, when was the last time we had a rate increase in sewer? Or Joe, I mean, you know?
Ten years, I believe, ten, ten years has been.
It's been longer than that.
I don't see if I can find the board.
It's been.
I think I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it may have been twenty twelve.
I think it was twenty twelve.
That's a number that's kept me off my mind right now.
I think it was, if that's in the book.
So, I think with, you know, look at how much inflation has taken, look at our costs from two thousand and twelve when we had the last increase compared to what we can, on a day, I don't have those numbers, obviously, but we know that they have substantially increased.
The, the guys, uh, running the sewer department, they, they, they've done a really good job of, of working within the, the constraints that they have. Uh, I guess, you know, they've got some issues, everybody's got some issue. But I feel like if we're being proactive and, and we are trying to address some of these minor things before they become major problems, we're money ahead. Uh, and then obviously pay for it out of our pocket through our rates, uh, there's a, there's a benefit as well.
All right, other questions? I want to weld the body.
Well, we'd have to, if we want to waive the second, third reading, we could, and read by title only since it's four pages.
Yeah, we have, we have a few. I'll move that we read by title only.
So, do we want to read it one time?
Well, say, I, I, I think we should add in title only and second, third reading.
I mean, that's fine if it's, if that's kosher.
This, this does have an emergency clause on it, the ordinance.
We'll have to put a next.
We'll have to put a priority clause.
So, and just to explain that, kind of like the previous, when if we wait six months, we're kind of beyond getting this implemented at the beginning of twenty-six. And I just feel like it's, you know, if we're going to change our rates to hit it first of the year, uh, it continues, uh, every July one, uh, after that, we begin the study period.
So, we have a motion to read by title only and waive the second.
Well, he just said to read by title only.
All right, and a motion, second, by title only, all in favor?
Uh, uh.
Twenty twenty-five dash P D O dash three. An ordinance establishing rates for sewers rendered by the sewer department of the city of Valonia, Arkansas declaring an emergency and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
All right, you prefer a reading in the proposed ordinance by title only?
I'll make a motion then to waive the second, third reading.
Sir.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to waive the second, third reading, all those in favor, signify that saying aye?
Uh.
All right, so.
Now, we have to, well, you have to vote to adopt the ordinance first.
Aye.
So.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash three.
Uh, have a motion, second, to adopt ordinance, twenty twenty-five dash three, all those.
It'll need to be by.
Voice vote, you're right, I'm getting, nine?
You want to start?
Yes.
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 Five yeses, is it that fast? All right, uh, so that, uh.
Now, I'll make a motion for emergency clause.
Second, we have a motion, second, to waive the emergency, or to inactive, adopt the emergency clause, making this ordinance go into effect as soon as it's passed. Uh, we need a voice vote on that as well?
We can, just to be safe.
Aye. Aye.
Yes.
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 All right, emergency clause is passed as well, so this ordinance has been adopted and will go into effect, uh, tonight, ten to nine, we are fixing.
Just to clarify, Mayor, that the adopt, the ordinance is adopted and going to affect the rates will be implemented in January one, correct?
Okay. All right, I guess you might as well stay up there.
Okay.
Because we're going to circle back around to the, everybody has a updated copy of the building codes? I get you to sit down, let's say, have questions, I think this is the technical. All right, so everybody has the copy, the corrected copy?
Yeah, so, like you said, the only I see changing is adding the emergency clause and changing section eleven dot zero eight, they're correct. Everything else as far as the need of it is the same.
All right, what is, we need to have a reading of that.
I think we should read by title only, I don't think we read this last time.
No, I don't think we did.
Yeah, we do.
All right, we have a second?
Sir.
Uh, all those in favor, signify that saying aye?
Uh.
All right, read the title only. Yeah, I, that's in, that's right.
Twenty twenty-five dash P D O dash zero one. An ordinance amending the building cu- building codes for residential and commercial construction within the city of Valonia, Arkansas declaring an emergency and prescribing other matters thereto.
All right, you've heard a reading of the proposed ordinance by title only.
Make a motion to waive second, third reading.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to waive the second, third reading, all those in favor, signify that saying aye?
Uh.
Opposed, all right.
Make a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to adopt, uh, the twenty twenty-five P D O one, uh, voice vote, nine?
Uh, yes.
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 All right, and building that ordinance is passed.
Uh, make a motion to adopt the emergency clause attached to the ordinance.
Second, we have a motion, a second, to adopt the emergency clause, all those in favor, signify that saying aye?
Uh.
Right, emergency clause is passed and that will go into effect as soon as we get our paperwork done and then. Mr. Foster, thank you for presenting tonight, and all your work for helping our city.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. All right, does anybody have anything further?
Will the city need these hard copies back or these firms?
Back and bake for you.
Yeah, I bet, here's a copy that Kelly can have for the files.
Yeah, and we'll get, get the miss mine, we'll get that in the file. All right, we have anything else, I'll entertain a motion in adjournment?
Uh, question real quick, I do know we have to put our ordinances on the, uh, website. Is, can you attach a copy of this that shows the rate study and everything as well? Okay, thank you.
Breaking in.
The computer guru.
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
All right, leave no further business, I'll entertain a motion with adjournment?
I'll move with adjournment.
All right, stand in adjournment, thank you all.